I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Ms. Karstafen.
Here.
Mr. Hauser. And Mrs. Sequin.
Okay, would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the July 20th, 2022, Liria Board of Education meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his right, absent, is Board Member Elaine Sequin. My name is Greg Elick. To my left is Board Member Annie Karstafen. Absent today is Board Member Len Hauser. Superintendent Anne Slush. And down on the end is our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Okay, I believe we do not have any presentations or recognition today. So we'll start off right away with speakers. And our first speaker is Mr. Parker. If you'd like to come forward. And Mr. Parker signed up for five minutes. He did try to communicate with the Treasurer on 15 minutes. So we'll give Mr. Parker some leeway there in case he goes over.
I'm just giving you some data that I'll discuss here through the thing. Brent Parker, 134 Buckingham Drive. Thank you guys for listening to me again regarding the Northwood Elementary School boundary change. Throughout today's presentation, there are two numbers I want you guys to remember. The number 11 and the number 16. Since last meeting, I've received documents from the Liria City Schools regarding open enrollment in the boundary change process. And I was hoping that I would find out that Northwood Elementary had accepted none to a very few open enrollments. This would have shown me that the school administration did in fact have to move students out of the school because numbers were high. However, I have found that some very concerning issues, including the fact that by moving out current neighborhoods like mine, they opened enough slots to allow for 16 open enrollments. If students have to be displaced from their neighborhood schools, one would think that it should be kept to a minimum possible. The first issue I'd like to address is the fact that there are 11 children in the neighborhood of Crestview. It's the second page. It's the bottom. There are the 11 kids' names and addresses. The families of these 11 children were notified on Thursday, April 12th by a letter sent from Superintendent Anne stating that our children will be attending Ely Elementary School next, starting the 2022-23 school year. The letter instructed us to contact Pupil Services with any questions. Pupil Services restated that our home school would be Ely Elementary and that we could apply for open enrollment to Northwood Elementary if we chose. Well, upon review of Liria City Schools' open enrollment policy, we learned that open enrollment started February 1st until the last day of April, last Friday of April, I apologize. The policy also stated that applications are approved on a first-come, first-served basis based on the date the request was received. This means that anyone that had chosen, because they knew they had to, to submit an application for open enrollment before that April 12th date would be ahead of our children, even though we were being displaced to make room at that school. When we asked the school board meeting, when we asked in a school board meeting if we would be given priority because of our displacement, we were never given an answer if it was the case or not. In documents I received from the schools, it shows that 16 children were approved for open enrollment. By simple math, that is more than the 11 children that were displaced because of overcrowding issues at Northwood Elementary. To make it worse, eight of those children were students from outside our district. Four from North Ridgeville, two from Midview, one from Olmsted Falls, and one from Lorraine. The other eight children are from Liria City Schools' elementarys. Now, I fully support open enrollment and allowing parents to choose where their children go to school. I just don't believe that students should be displaced from their neighborhood schools to allow for open enrollment. The other issue I have is when I called on April 12th and talked to a Liria School administrator employee about the boundary change, he told me the school was overcrowded and that even his children who were open enrolled to Northwood Elementary from North Ridgeville would have to go to another school. However, after receiving the information from the school and reviewing with my two daughters that attended Northwood last year, I believe that he or a family member submitted open enrollment paperwork on March 23rd. One actually says May 23rd, but I believe that's a clerical error. But both children were actually approved. Obviously, this is only an educated guess using city of residence, grade level, and gender. As board members, you can verify the accuracy of this statement. I equate this to buying 11 plane tickets to go to Paris on any major airline. A week before you fly, the airline tells you that you're going to get bumped from the flight due to plane capacity. But that they would allow you to fly to Florida for the same cost, no refunds or no vouchers. Both locations are nice, but you already paid for your lodging and trips in France. And that's where you want to go on your vacation. The airline tells you that you can submit your name for standby, and if there's any room, they will put you on the plane. Upon getting to the airport, you learn that the standby list started a month before you put your name on it, because you had a ticket, right? And that you were actually at the very back of the line. The airline then takes the first 16 standby passengers and lets them on the flight. You are now stuck going to Florida while the others that didn't purchase the ticket while they were openings enjoy Paris. Starting in April, as soon as we received our letters, we have been pleading with the school administration and the school board to not go through with this change and allow our neighborhood to stay at the school with the same neighbors we have always been. The school's argument was that it was needed for overcrowding issues. However, on June 1st, the administration approved 16 open enrollment students. Why would the school not look at the numbers for next year, realize that they didn't need to move our neighborhood, and put us back into the Northwood Elementary School District? I understand that other neighborhoods did have to move schools, but all but ours returned to a prior school they attended. We have never gone to Ely Elementary. It is not conducive to building friendships or the concept of neighborhood schools. I refer to Liria City Schools' Open Enrollment Processing Procedures, Section Application Guidelines, Approval Guidelines. Inter-district and intra-districts, open enrollment applications shall be considered on a first-come, first-served, date-of-reception basis with an assurance that the following orders for placement will be followed. A, native students will not be displaced. B, presently enrolled students. C, siblings of presently enrolled students. And D, new applicants requesting transfer. We feel that the school is violating that no native students will be displaced. At the time the open enrollment started, our neighborhood was planning on attending Northwood Elementary School. It wasn't until April 12th that we were notified of the intended change of elementary schools. The second thing I want to address is the data Mr. Koch used for assessing which neighborhoods we should move out of Northwood Elementary. The following questions were put into the rubric to assess the viability of redistricting each neighborhood. One, will the students pass a school or go to another school? Do the students already receive transportation? Will the redistricting increase transportation costs? Will the students still attend the same middle school? What is the travel distance and time for the new school? Is the selected neighborhood and adjusted boundary adjacent to the current accepting school boundary? After reviewing the finding, I question how I can get to Ely Elementary without passing Northwood Elementary. That is, unless I go north on Gulf to West River to 57 and back to Gulf Road. Which I understand errors, but a rubric is only as good as the information entered into it. The questions I don't see on the rubric. How will this move affect neighborhoods? How will, how will the children in this neighborhood be able to access friends from school easily? Will this split neighborhoods, friends unnecessarily? These are the questions one should ask when deciding on child development. I stand, well, I sit here today and fight this change because I was taught to stand up for what I believe is right. I have neighbors with me, and they're supporting. Some may speak. I have spent many years helping people and standing up for others, whether they were afraid or not able to do so for themselves. I understand that I'm putting a target on my chest, and I can only hope that school board and administration understand that the only thing personal about this fight is that it's my neighbors and my daughter's friends that are being affected. I believe that even if the school administration determined that our neighborhood was the most logical one to move to Ely, once they saw there were openings and the overcrowding issue, the reason for moving them in the first place was no longer a factor, they should have retracted the decision and kept our neighborhood in the Northwood Elementary School District. I feel we have been very respectful and have followed the proper channels of talking to the school administration and then bringing it to the school board. We have turned in signatures of 88 voting members of our neighborhood. However, I feel that our pleas are going nowhere, and we are running out of time as school starts next month. I hope that presenting these numbers, 11 and 16, it will mean something to the board. I did contact the Ohio Ethics Commission this week to discuss starting an investigation and how this matter has been handled on many different levels. After talking to an investigator, I feel confident in what I have presented and positive that someone else from the outside had the same questions after hearing the data. Why move 11 students out of their home schools because of overcrowding only to approve 16 open enrollments? Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. Next, we have speaking for five minutes is Kevin Kayden. Kevin, come on down, please. Kevin, first, would you please state for the record your current address, please?
170 Buckingham Drive.
Okay, great. Thank you, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Obviously, I'm here supporting Brent and my children. It's kind of frustrating to be here, I'm going to be honest with you. I like to get, basically, I think it's very important for me to explain how I ended up here tonight, okay? Now, I, as somebody who has a sports background, a management background, I find that I tend to lean towards team building. I lean towards concepts of taking it for the team, greatest benefit, John Stuart Mills, if you want to go that far with it. I also believe in experts. I believe that individuals who have been trained and have experience should be trusted to do their job. And when there's a question, you should have faith in that the answers you're getting are legitimate and effort to make sure that all stakeholders' considerations and needs are being taken care of. Additionally, I would like to, before I even really get started, I would like to say that I appreciate and respect everybody on the board and administration for spending their time and energy. Selfless act of dealing with our children, it's an important role in community, and I like to thank you for that. So I'm getting to my moment here. When my wife first brought my attention, to my attention, the letter dated April 11th from Anne telling the change to my son's school placement, my first thought was, yeah, it sucked. But it must be occurring for legitimate reason. I could not fathom why the step of displacing children would not be the last option to reduce the overcrowding issue. My wife informed me that the option to apply for open enrollment was offered, and we chose to apply. When the application was denied, it reinforced in my brain severity of the overcrowding issue. It seemed to follow. At no point did I doubt the administration was not putting forth the best solution for all or giving the appropriate consideration to all parties involved. Now, fast forward to the data that Brent received, and I'm a big data person, right? The fact that there are 16, as he said, open enrolled students in Northwood while our 11 was displaced was absolutely mind-boggling to me. I didn't understand it. How did that come to pass is the big question. You know, it's a process question. It's a transparency question. If the purpose of the new boundaries would alleviate overcrowding, how was that achieved by taking away, I guess it was like 30 overall kids, and now adding 16 back in, that's what, like 52, 54% right back in? Why didn't we just chop it to 50%? I mean, and make that work? Why, why do we have to displace kids to open up space for open enrollment if we have an overcrowding issue? To me, it's counterproductive, doesn't make any sense in the world. I can't get my brain around that rationally. Now, so, and now, the question being is, you know, if open enrollment was still to be available, I'm sorry. Now, if the purpose of the new boundaries was to alleviate overcrowding, why did open enrollment not just be suspended in the first place? Does that make sense? I mean, if you are saying we are overcrowded and we need to reduce our kids at the school, why even hold the concept of open enrollment open? Now, there's obviously, there's obviously openings at Northwood, I mean, excuse me, at Ely, Westwood would be, you know, why aren't those options for the people looking to open enroll? I'm sure there's some legacy open enrollments and things of that nature, and I understand that. But it just seemed to be, you know, it should be something, that if you're taking kids away from their friends and their teachers and their academic environment that they're happy with and they're, they're doing well in, moving to a different school seems to be a last, stop, a stop, a last resort, you know? And I don't believe that was the case here. Now, subsequently, if open enrollment was still to be available, I believe the appropriate step would have been to suspend the start of the application period in order to automatically place the displaced students at the end of the line and give them their chances of approval. Not halting the start date effectively gave priority to the outside students, as Brett mentioned. Actually, there were, of the 16 students who were accepted for open enrollment, per the data, 14 of them actually applied prior to April 11th. I mean, so that means, I mean, really, do we have any chance at all to get our kids back where we want them to be? I mean, it was, honestly, I kind of feel like it was a false flag moment, like, here, I'm going to give them to you guys here, but that's not really the case. Because obviously, you know, we're at the end of the day, and we, if only 16 were going to be approved, that obviously wasn't the number in, in sight, right? That wasn't just, oh, we're going to go, no, we'll leave it. Additionally, I believe that there was a, an appropriate process should have critical decision points. Determining the efficacy of the process while making course corrections in response is necessary to achieve one's goals in process management. It seems to me that realization of the line of the open enrollment of 16 students did not solve, you know, we ended up with 11 out of our district, our school area, so you ended up getting 52% back. How, I guess my question is this, is, it seems to me at some point in the process, there should be somebody that said, are we achieving what we're really trying to achieve here? And I don't, and are we making the moves that we should make? Honestly, I don't believe that occurred. You know, like, so why not, and like I said, why not open, if they were taking 16 kids in, and there's 11 from Crestwood, and the other districts, the other areas that are moving are going back to their normal, where their schools have been prior to, and we're going to end up with 16, why not keep our 11 and add the five? You know, I mean, it just seems to be a very rational thought, less damage to the children being moved, other people having moments. Is that my time? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm almost done. Just one second here, I'll get to my point. So I, I view that the moving of the children to Northwood from Ely is basically indefensible. I believe that the, the non, the decrease of the enrollment isn't justified. Displaced students not receiving the same opportunity to enroll was a affront to opportunity. I also feel, I feel that there was a failed to provide transparent process in a conversation with such a sensitive topic as our children. And to be honest with you, I, no offense, I feel the administration has completely unperformed our expectations here. I believe that, you know, we deserve as taxpayers more importantly, but as parents who entrust our children, you, I believe we deserve a better explanation than we've received. We shouldn't be clawing and yailing to get 118-page document when we ask for data. You know, that's kind of absurd. And I have two competing realizations here, and I don't know, my brain goes both ways. I kind of feel it's either unintentional borderline inofficience or intentional disregard for the children based upon some unknown policy that, or goal that we're not, we're not attuned to, that we're not aware of, that has driven the decision. And that goes back to us not having a transparent process here. So I implore the members of the board to do the right thing by our children, our neighborhood, and by extension, the whole city of Liria. Remember this uncomfortable moment. I seriously hope that the board takes these questions to heart and engages with us to restore our, to restore our trust. That's all.
Great, super, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker, and thank you, Mr. Kayden. And later in the meeting, I will ask the board to maybe share their comments on open enrollment. And, but we will move along on the agenda here to the minutes. The minutes for the June 29th, 2022 meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second. I have a motion by Board Member Karstafen and a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Treasury Action Items, Madam Treasurer.
Yes, I just have two routine items. The first being my monthly financial reports for June, and the second one being some very generous donations. One from the Liria Pioneer Club. Actually, there were two from there, for, one for $5,000 and one for $10,000 to the athletic department. And then we have, on the behalf of the estate of Sheila Bachmore, we have a $25,000 donation to Special Olympics.
Great, wonderful, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Treasury Action?
Still moved.
The motion by Board Member Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstafen. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, you have other items for us this evening?
Yes, I just have one item, and that is to approve the appointment of the classified administrative staff as detailed in the agenda. Jen has been doing our payroll since January, and we're ready to bump her up on the schedule.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve our new coordinator of payroll?
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to ask a question, I may be out of order. With this, this position has been, she's been acting in this role since January. Is this a created role, or it was already there?
The coordinator, coordinator position was already there.
It was already there.
We have moved payroll into that hour.
Okay, payroll into that position, thank you.
Okay, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, the next one is to appoint board members as representatives for the expulsion hearing that was originally scheduled for this evening, that has been asked to be rescheduled on August 10th.
Who was originally assigned to the meeting today?
Mike and Annie.
We were.
Did you want to do the text?
I, I stated earlier, the 10th is not even a good board meeting for me, because it was a move date.
Oh, that's right, that was a rescheduled date.
That was a rescheduled date, that's not good for me.
All right, well, I guess we'll put Elaine in there. So we'll go ahead and put Elaine Sequin and Mike Gebhardt as the primary, and the remaining three board members as the alternates.
Got it.
And do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
A motion by Board Member Karstafen, do I have a second, Mr. Gebhardt?
Second.
Second. All right, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. And do we have anything on the facility, the construction?
Yes, we do, we have a change order.
Oh, the change order, okay.
As listed for the project at Crestwood.
Okay, so we have the change order. First of all, do I have a motion to approve the change order?
Still moved, second.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt and a second by Board Member Karstafen. Can we just, so this one is not, is Brian here? This is not the water under the driveway, or the, oh, it is the water underneath?
No, it's not, correct.
Okay, that's the next one? So this is the electrical, all the electrical that we're doing, is that what this one is for?
This looked like some caseworks, some Western work that needed to be done.
And the Ohio Edison.
And the Ohio Edison piece.
And all the Ohio Edison?
And then electric, yes, electrical for service charges from Ohio Edison, the brand, upgraded power for the building to make the new electrical requirements.
Okay, so we didn't get the details of the change order. I'm okay with what we're doing, because I'm aware of it already, but could we, could the board get the details of what makes up the total amount of the change order, please? Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
No.
With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have action items for us this evening?
I do, and if I don't make it all the way through with my cough, Joy's going to finish for me.
All right.
So here we go.
Sounds good, we got a plan.
Yes, we do. To approve the payment of the following stipends as listed below, we're getting ready to get back to school. So to approve the payment of the stipends as listed below for academic services, to approve the payment of the stipends as listed below for CPI training, to approve the agreement with the Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Agency as we do each year, to approve PSI with St. Jude's, to approve the contract with the Education Alternatives for the upcoming school year, to approve the revisions to the Liria City Schools' Code of Conduct, and there were very few, just minor changes, to approve the contracts for STEPS Education Group, to authorize the student transportation contract between Liria City School District and Education Alternatives, to approve the life care wheelchair transportation contract for the upcoming school year, and to approve the MOU with the Sheriff's Office. This is the SRO for Westwood Campus, and we're sharing it with a program out at JVS with the ESC.
Okay, great.
That concludes my action.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent Action Items?
Still moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstafen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments?
I just have one question. When we have the life care wheelchair transportation and those, those are the same that we do every year at this time, right, I thought? So I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
And we have to wait to see if it's a need.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I have a quick question on the SRO. So this one is going to be primarily Westwood?
All Westwood campus.
All Westwood campus. So how many SROs do we have in total?
So we have a full-time at the high school.
Right.
We have full-time position at both the Northwood and Eastern Heights campus, but it's different police officers each day.
Okay.
Some do more than one day. And then we have this Sheriff's Office, which will be three days, one week, two days the next, three days the next, because we're sharing it.
Okay.
But within driving distance to get here if they need to on a different day.
Okay, great. All right, any other questions or comments? With no more, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Madam Superintendent, Personnel Action Items this evening.
Okay, I'm going to run through them, and then I have a few introductions. First of all, to approve the resignation of the certified administrative staff, Julie Oka and Vince Velazquez. Julie is the new Shane out at the early college, so she's still going to be working with our students.
So we traded Shanes, is that what?
Yes, we did. And then Vince, Vince retired from administration, he's doing what he loves and going back to ROTC, but unfortunately, it's with Lorraine, not us, because that's what the commission called him to do.
Okay.
So, but he'll forever be a pioneer, he said. Also, the resignation of the following certified staff, to approve the appointment of the following administrative staff, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as listed below, as you can see, we are hiring away, to approve the supplemental contracts as listed below, to approve the following athletic supplemental contracts for district certified staff and non-district coaches, to approve the following district and non-district game workers, to approve the termination of the following classified staff member, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff as listed below. And that concludes my personnel action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one, thank you. Which one?
Number 10 on page 12.
Yes, oh, there wasn't, to approve the unpaid leave as listed below. And now that concludes my action items, or personnel action.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the Superintendent's Personnel Action Items.
Still moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstafen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Questions and comments? Comment? Also, too, I don't know, Heather, if you received it, but I received a email from Joel Siniger, and he will no longer be able to do the football games. So he was very thankful in that, and he really enjoyed it. But he has life changes going on and will no longer be available on Friday, so.
And you will still see him on the list, because I'm hoping that in a pinch, he will
And you will still see him on the list, because I'm hoping that in a pinch, he will be a backup for me.
So I guess you're gonna have to find a new voice there, so I wanted to throw that in there. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer?
Sowarka guy.
Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstofen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries, and I believe we have some introductions here.
We do, first of all, Marissa Moyer, grade-three teacher at Hamilton, is here.
Welcome aboard.
I believe she has a son that goes to Alaria Schools. Awesome, thank you. And then we have Selena, I'm gonna try, Vigio.
All right.
This is our new gifted and ELL coordinator.
Great, welcome aboard.
Then we have Matt Sowarka.
Well, wait, that guy's not new, is he?
Well, look at how cleaned up he is.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I didn't recognize him.
Almost didn't recognize him, but he works with the other day, and we, we were teasing him, but he is our new middle school athletic director. I think we're gonna knock it out of the park with Heather and Matt, and really grow our programs, which is what we're doing.
Matt, congratulations.
I would also like to mention Jody Johnson, she could not be here, but she is also going back home, so to speak, as the associate principal at the high school, and it's gonna be really exciting, Tim is excited and the whole staff, so welcome back, Jody, and did anyone, oh, how could I forget you? We spent the day together. Armando Torres, our new mental health counselor, social worker at the high school, he is a former student and wrestler for us.
Oh, great.
So Armando, please stand up and wave.
Welcome aboard, great, or welcome back, we should say.
So we're, we're expecting great things from him, but that is it.
Okay, you've been very busy there.
Yes.
On the hiring process, so, all right, do you have a Superintendent report for us this evening, Madam Superintendent?
Just real quick, wanted to let you know, we have some exciting athletic and camp intervention that's been going on or starting, really exciting, lots of pictures going around social media. This is our last week in this building, so starting Monday, the move begins. Some of us are taking next week off, because we don't like to move, but it's all good.
So question, does the new board office have air conditioning?
It does.
Oh, wow, all right.
It does, and I think it's, and it works.
And it works, nice.
It's real exciting.
And it works, both.
And it works.
Outstanding.
So we're real excited, I do have to say kudos to Mr. Kokai and his whole team, they've done a fabulous job. Also, the prepared meals started up again for our families on Wednesdays, almost like TV dinners, so you'll see it on social media, but they do it, Amy, do you know the exact time they do it at the drive-through at the high school? Three to four, okay, and you can just drive through right at the roundabout at the high school, and we just wanted to start putting this out there. Unfortunately, the federal government has discontinued all children eating free that they had during the COVID time period, so we wanted to start getting the message out to parents, we'll be sending things home, but the eating free stops, we're hoping they do a last-minute change, but the new prices and everything will be coming out. And that is all I have on my report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent, moving along on the agenda, Board of Education, we have some board business here. The first item is to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies, there's two, and then to approve the first reading of the following four policies. So do I have a motion to approve the new policies for the second reading and the first reading?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Board Member Gebhardt?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstofen, any questions or comments? Unfortunately, our board policy person liaison is not here, so she did comment, I believe, last time on the first reading, and we'll have a comment from her at the next meeting on the second reading. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstofen?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. I also have to ask for a resolution, as every, most people here are aware of, unfortunately, our treasurer's contract is up, and we do not have a new treasurer in yet, and she has been so kind to stay on during the process, so I will ask for support of a resolution, be it resolved that the Alaria School Board, Alaria School District Board of Education approves the treasurer's contract as prepared by the Board's Council, providing for a term commencing August 1 of '22 and expiring on September 16 of '22 at a rate of 540 per day worked, be it further resolved that the President of the Board is authorized to execute the treasurer's contract on behalf of the Board. The Board has had a copy of the full contract, so I will ask at this time for a motion to approve this contract.
Still moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstofen, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstofen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries, and you can't get rid of us quite yet, so, all right, moving along on the agenda, I'd like to also, since we've continued to have people address the Board on the boundary issue, we are getting late in the process with schools starting, I would ask that the Board share their thoughts, and this would be the time now to speak up if the process is not acceptable to any Board member, and I will go ahead and start. My, my thoughts on this is, obviously, when we passed that levy on, what was it, November six, 2016, correct, for the new schools, we know we'd have to adjust boundaries. Adjusting boundaries, it's never an easy thing, as a matter of fact, my, my child was displaced with a, an adjustment there when we moved the kids from McKinley up to Heights, and it's never easy. Is it a perfect science? Absolutely not. I don't think that you could have ten different people doing it, and they'd all come up with a different way to do it, but I have been involved with building the schools as the building liaison, and have sat through the meetings, and have seen how we have to make changes, and I, I don't think it's an easy process, and I do appreciate the time that Mr. Kokai, Ms. Losh, and the other people have done on this, and it's unfortunate that there are people, we've had some people, Mr. Parker, other people at Northwood, that don't agree with it, but I will say, in my opinion, that I think they've done well, and I think they've accomplished their mission, and I am fully in support of what has been done here, so. With that said, Mr. Gebhardt, would you like to share your thoughts?
I pretty much agree with you, hopefully, the open enrollment can be worked out, and they can get all their questions answered, and maybe it'll work out for the best.
Okay. Okay, Annie?
In reviewing all of the information that was given to us in the last email, I hope you can hear me, in the emails that I received, and trust me, I read everything that was emailed, it was quite extensive, I think that Mr. Kokai and our superintendent and everyone involved did a, did their due diligence to make sure that they covered all aspects of looking at everything. I would have to say that I don't like hearing that any student is having to drive, you know, a quarter of, a quarter of an inch farther, or go any farther than they need to go, I don't like hearing that, I want that understood. If it was one of my children, I know my children are older, but I wouldn't want them to go any further, I'm, I'm very saddened by hearing that, but by the same token, I trust what I'm hearing from the superintendent, she's in that position to do that position, and I believe that she does it well, she does a very well job, and I'm, I'm trusting that information that I'm receiving. I do want to personally apologize for what every voter, what every parent, and what every homeowner is having to endure in the neighborhood, though, I just want to make that clear to both, for both sides.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Karstofen. Madam Superintendent, before you comment, I would like to share, Mr. Hauser is on vacation, and he did text me his comments, and he asked that, even though he is not here and he would not have any voting privileges, he did ask that I share his comments, so I'll go ahead and do that, and he said, "The boundaries were well thought out by the administration, however, it is not a perfect science. If there is a citizen that makes a compelling case for a personal exception, I believe that the administration should strongly consider accommodating the request, so long as it affects a minimal amount of students and does not disrupt the overall plan." So that was comments from Mr. Hauser. I'll also ask, before I take any motions or anything from the Board, Madam Superintendent, would you, do you have any thoughts? We hear a lot, we're hearing a lot from some of the citizens that are, that are not happy with the process, but did you want to share anything on?
Sure, sure, just, you know, and again, my, my mom and dad lived, I believe it was 182 Buckingham, yes, they were your neighbors, so, and it, again, it's never easy, it's not our intent to ever pull any student from what they consider home, and it, it's gut-wrenching, and that's why it was such a long process for us, and this is the second boundary change we made during the construction process. Do know, the sixteen, just so you know, those were renewal open enrollments from previous years, they were not new. I just wanted to clarify that, so it didn't sound like we took new people from the street and brought them in, knowing we were doing what we're doing. We closed open enrollment, and we knew people, so I did want to clarify that. The other piece is that there are sometimes circumstances, as far as need and stuff medically, special ed-wise, that we have to place students that are out of our control, so those are all things we can't necessarily bring up, but I wanted to make you aware. As I told you at the beginning, Mr. Parker and everyone else involved, that if there becomes any opening, you are first in priority, and we talked today at Cabinet about looking at the, the numbers, and we look every week, if there are openings and we can bring people back, you are first in line, and that, that is a promise I made a long time ago, Mr. Park, when Mr. Parker and I were speaking, but just know, we want what's best for all of your children, and I know it's difficult, and if we could make one more classroom in each wing, we would, but that's not, not how it works. Unfortunately, I will say this in my closing comment, we did try to get the state to let us build, because our enrollment didn't go down as the DeYoung study told us it was, there was a ten-year-ago study in 2016, so in 2006 to 2016, they did a trending, and we were supposed to be at 5,700 students, we did not, we actually have enough students to build a whole nother K4 building, and we tried to expand and petition the OFCC, but at that time, they were no longer giving out any new money or anything, so I did want to say that, that that was something we tried to address before this all happened, and that has lent to some of the overcrowding, so.
And that was one of the constraints with taking 200, what, 40 million approximately from the state to assist, so.
Yeah.
All right, so at this time, is there any Board member that would like to formally bring up any action on this process?
Do we need to? Do we need to?
No. Okay, with none, this will be the last time that the Board addresses the boundaries. All right, we do not have an executive session this evening, so at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
A motion by Board Member Karstofen, do I have a second, Mr. Gebhardt?
I'll make a second, if we don't come back here again.
So for the last time ever, we will ask for a roll call to adjourn out of this meeting and building.
Ms. Karstofen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. We'll see you in the new building next time.
With air conditioning, right?